All right, we are recording, so I will call us to order at nine oh five. So this is our organizational meeting, so we have to do nominations and stuff, so I need a motion to allow me to be temporary chair of the February meeting.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor? All right, so do we have any nominations for planning board chair? Paul Roman nominated Paul Thompson, but Paul Thompson has actually told me ahead of time that he would not accept a nomination, so we need a new planning board chair.
I would like to nominate Bob.
We have a nomination for Bob Davis, are any other nominations? Paul Roman made a second for that nomination. If not, I'll close the nominations for chair. We have a motion to close the nominations.
I'll make the motion.
All right, we have a bunch of people that said that, so Ted made a second or something, I think. All in favor of making Bob Davis the chair of the planning board, all in favor? Right, Bob, you want me to continue with the nominations, or did you want to take over?
No, go ahead.
Okay, we have a nomination for vice chair of planning board.
I'll name it, who is it, Paul?
Uh, right now it's Bob.
Oh, okay.
All right, Ted nominated Paul Roman as the vice chair of planning board. We have a second. Paul Thompson seconded. All in favor? We have a nomination for secretary, it is currently Perry who has not resigned. Ted has nominated Mike Flanagan who just signed on, thank you. We have a second for making Mike the secretary, Paul Roman seconded. All in favor? All right, two thirty-nine, do we have a nomination for chair of the vice, or the two thirty-nine committee?
Nominate Ted.
Paul Thompson is nominated to Ted, do you have a second? Paul Roman seconded.
Okay.
All in favor? We have a vice chair of the two thirty-nine committee. I don't know who it is right now.
I think it was Paul.
Is it Paul?
Yeah. Can we get Mike to two positions?
I don't know. Mike, do you want two positions? He said, okay.
Okay.
So Ted has nominated, Mike is a vice chair of two thirty-nine review, have a second?
I'll second, Bob Davis.
Bob Davis seconds. All in favor? All right, Bob, floor is yours.
Okay. So we're looking at the planning board minutes from January twelfth. We need a motion to accept those, if they look okay.
Paul Roman made a motion here, Bob.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Steve seconded, all in favor? Under the two thirty-nine minutes, again, need a motion to accept those.
I'll make that motion.
It's Paul, thank you, second?
Ted, Ted and Paul here seconded or firsted too.
Okay, all in favor? So we're on to new business. Hazard mitigation plan.
All right, so we continue to move forward on the hazard mitigation plan, we've been sending out emails religiously almost weekly to the supervisors and the highway superintendents. The plan is to have everything done in April. So if you have not already submitted your documentation, or if you don't know if your town has submitted your documentation, please reach out to them and let them know that they need to do so. We actually have a meeting with Tetra Tech at ten o'clock today to see what the status is, and we'll be sending out probably another email probably today or tomorrow, so. But we've sent out another one, I think it was last Monday. But there's very few municipalities that have completely finished everything, so it's likely that there are still some things to do. Other than that, nothing more about hazard mitigation plan.
Is Guilford done, Jane?
Uh, George submitted the, some of the forms yesterday, George, I think, or a day before. And Kate Long was reviewing that and was going to be submitting back some more information for completion, so it should be just about done if not already.
Okay. So we're on to the transportation item?
Sure, so we haven't received a contract yet, so really there's nothing more we can do at this point. So yeah, until we have a contract with Rural Health Network, there's nothing we can do with that, so.
Okay. Clean energy communities?
Um, so.
Have to use your.
There's Kelly.
So, so, um, we recently received a new round of funding for the clean energy communities with like new actions, and this Thursday, our clean energy communities coordinator, Karen Carroll, will be presenting about this new round to the committee, and we've, kind of also relating to the next item, which is the climate smart communities, like we, Shane and I, we looked at what actions overlap, and we found that there are a few, which is really helpful for both programs, because there's some that we've already completed for the climate smart communities action from the last round of clean energy communities, um, actions, and then some that we're going to come, we hope to complete will also overlap with climate smart community as well. Um, and then, so, next item, climate smart communities, is that, uh, a resolution was sent back to committee, so on this Thursday, we'll be discussing that resolution further with committee, and we've, um, Shannon, so when we looked at all those actions that we overlapped, we found that about twenty-five out of the needed points that we needed were completed, and then about thirty-four are underway. So we've already completed about half for the bronze certification for the climate smart communities action.
And the reason that the resolution went back to committee from the board is because they didn't like some of the language where it's basically a pledge. So we're going to try and, there's the whereas is in the resolution, we can change, the actual resolves, we can't, that's required by the program. So we're hoping if we reword the whereas is in the resolution, we can get that put through. But it's basically because there's the, in the resolution, it says like, you know, we agree that there's climate change, you know, we're pushing for renewable energy, there's invasive species, and some of the stuff that some of the supervisors, I don't think, really believe in. So it made it hard for them to really push that initiative forward, so I think if we can change the whereas is, we can get that pushed forward. We'll see Thursday.
Anything else there, are we on to the next item?
Is this, is this to get them to be able to apply for certain other grant programs? I guess I don't recall the clean energy.
So the clean energy program, if you remember, was something we did between around, well, it started about three years ago, and we finished it last year. And what the clean energy communities does is if you get a certain number of action items, or in this case now, points completed, you are eligible for a grant to use for energy upgrades of any kind of facilities or projects, proposals, whatever. So the last time we did this, you had to complete four action items, and then you received a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, which we used to upgrade the heating and control units for the county office building. Um, and there's no match to that grant, so we're hoping to do this again, and then the climate smart communities, because there's similar actions, you could also be eligible for other grants, which are like fifty percent matches, but still it's better than nothing. So you know, in thinking, we need a building project done sometime soon, that's going to have energy upgrades, like new windows, a new roof, lighting, all these things could be eligible for grants, if we get this certification done.
Nice. Thank you.
So if they balk, supervisors balk at one, one of the action items, there's enough on the list where you could like, get rid of that one and pick another one maybe.
So for instance, one of the action items is telling businesses to cut down on their energy.
Okay.
A lot of supervisors don't think we should be controlling what the businesses do. Now, we agree with that, we're not going to do that action item, because we don't want to get into that scenario, but there's enough other action items that we could do to make it work.
Yeah, like in total, there's, if you did every single action item, I think your point total would be like over a thousand, but for bronze certification, you only need a hundred and twenty. So it's like, yeah, there's a lot of.
Shane, when I, like, I've been working with a number of companies like the Dog Food Factory even, right, with some alternative energy heat sources for them, um, they're looking at parallel boilers systems where they run electric boiler right next to a propane or fuel oil boiler, and it automatically will switch based on cost of the, of the energy at the time for BTU. I'm looking at some control units and things. If, if I find out that a company adopts some of that stuff, that would count towards your clean energy program?
I don't think so, I think the county would have to actually adopt a policy that would reduce the amount of energy that the business used. I think that has, was more of it, and I don't foresee the supervisors wanting to adopt such a resolution that would restrict energy usage of our businesses. So I wish it was that simple, but no.
Okay. Because there's a lot of really interesting stuff, we're looking at some stuff at the hospital too, that I've come across at the Care Energy Network meetings.
Anything else on those two items, the clean energy communities, climate smart, anything else we need to discuss?
That's it.
Okay, so we're on to Steve.
Um, okay, on the energy side, um, I was at a meeting with Shane on the five-one-one ride share program, the state's got a kiosk for that now, and they were having trouble locating it, I have it in Morrisville, uh, on the campus of Morrisville right now, here in Norwich. I'm going to call today and try to get arranged to have that moved over to the Eaton Center, and from there, we'll probably move into the county office building if we ever get traffic going through there again. Um, it helps people match ride sharing opportunities up. You know, the education workforce development, you, you can't believe the number of jobs that are open out there, I've been working with Martha Ryan on a, on a program, and I mean, even, even Golden Artist Colors has five open jobs right now. You can just imagine, and they range from IT positions, purchasing positions, down to just pathagers and handlers. I've done a list for Martha of jobs from A to Z in Shenango County, and what I'm finding is like, okay, so there's a listing actually on the Department of Labor website, jobs from A to Z. I put one letter in, and then I put in where somebody would work in the county doing those jobs. And our educators don't realize things like, you know, how many places there are accountants or chemists, right, they don't realize that Shabani employs chemists, and pharmacist employs chemists, and Kerry employs chemists, and Raymond has chemists, right, they don't realize the, the broad spectrum of employers that we have. Working with SUNY Morrisville on the, you know, the, upgrading the job skills. We're still talking with Unison, they want to do a two-year program around mechatronics. We're talking about how we can deliver that, we're going to be talking with, um, MACNE, the Manufacturing Association of Central New York, the first week of March, and what we're really thinking, Morrisville thinks we may need to do to supply, to, to train people for all the different companies around here, is we may have to move that program around, maybe even teach at, um, maybe Unadilla Valley School, where we can get people from Shabani, Corning over in Oneonta, Golden Artist, right, and, and teach these skills like mechatronics and machining. I just finished doing a two-year program for UB, they're still not certain whether they want to do the SME Prime program, or they want to go it alone. I just laid out a two-year set of classes using the SME tooling you programs, or a CTE program in mechatronics for that, that school. And this week, they want me to go back through that all and try to align it with our common core standards, right? Which, um, you know, if you're working with a blueprint, that really takes you into geometry, so they want me to go through all of those courses and align them, um, the SME gave me free access to the, the entire catalog. And then I'm working with, um, Bob Murphy, who is the Broom Tioga, uh, workforce development specialist down in Benhampton. They've got a two million dollar budget for workforce development, and actually last week, some of that money, he flowed some of that into Morrisville, because they're supporting jobs at Raymond and people at Raymond, right, a lot of them come from Broom County. So there's a lot of, a lot of things going on around workforce development, and I think that's going to be a huge need for the next few years. Right, just because we can't find people, you go through the, I've been on every website for every company in Shenango County that actually has a website with job openings on it, every single company here has, you know, little companies like Golden Artist, they have five, Raymond has forty. So, we have a, an ongoing problem, I do not know how to fix, other than, you know, along the margins. I think that's all I have.
Steve, I have a question, with all those openings, is there a system within the, uh, community colleges and BOCs so that they, they know that those openings exist?
This is something that Martha Ryan and I have been talking about, right? There was a job opening at Shangri-La Pet Foods or Southern Tier Pet Nutritions, right, they, they had an opening for a labeler, right, just put labels on content, they don't have a website, they're not listing it with the Department of Labor, they did not go through a temp agency. And Bill Huffendell, he simply sent that out as a, a, a post on Facebook, right? So you, you find jobs that way. A lot of jobs, opening, uh, entry level jobs, right, they come through the temp agencies. There is no rhyme or reason to any of this, right, there's no rhyme or reason to any of it, bigger companies, you can go to their website, but even there, some of the jobs, they don't advertise, because what they get is they get people that, that think they can do the job, but don't have the skill set. And now you've got all these applications that come in, that you've got to manage, right? It's, it's interesting, I mean, it really is interesting. And now you've got all these things like, I, I get job offers from, on Lincoln, right, every week I get a job offer through Lincoln. You've got indeed.com, you've got monster.com, you've got all these online places now. The other thing we're talking, Martha, I told Martha, these kids do not know how to network. And we're going to do, I suggested to her last week when we were talking, maybe what we're going, what I think we're going to try to do, she's doing a, you know, a full day virtual career fair, and I suggested that we try to find half a dozen people who have gotten recently taken a job, younger people, to do just a, a two-minute interview on how they got the job. I placed Missy Hayes, right, Chris and Missy Hayes at Hayes Office Supply. I had Blake Sullivan from Unison call me two years ago and say, I'm looking for an intern to work in our mechatronics department. Right, you have, you know anybody who might want to do that, I go and have a cup of coffee at Garfs, I ask Mark Demilier if he knows anybody, he says, yeah, Missy Hayes' son's in engineering program. I stopped by on the way into the, into the chamber offices, say, Blake Sullivan down at Unison, looking for a job, your son interested in an internship, and next thing I know, he's, he's working there. And he took a friend of his with him, so they, they took, they took two interns from Norwich, but if I hadn't known Blake, and I hadn't reached out, right, I don't know how that would have happened.
Right.
Right, and this is, I mean, you know, this, this goes on all the time, I place people, you know, because things like Bill Huffendell, I, I put three people in jobs last year, because people like that, contact me, you know anybody who knows how to. And then Linda and I, we know everybody, I mean, we've been here an awful long time, and we're able to put people into jobs just because we know, we know how to make the connections. And any suggestions you guys have, I mean, I just, I'm baffled by some of this.
So the Department of Labor wouldn't be the organizing agency for that, or?
A lot of jobs don't go there, people don't, don't list with the Department of Labor.
I understand.
Right, and for most of the year, the Department of Labor, what they did last year was just dealt with unemployment insurance.
Okay, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
These jobs are listed all over the place, right, they're listed all over the place, you won't find the, 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 the two second shift jobs at Golden Artist Colors, you know, handling materials, stacking materials, those jobs, they popped up on Facebook, they're on Golden's website. There are no place else that I can find it. So if the kid doesn't know to go to Golden's website, they're not going to know this job is out there.
It's another job for the planning department, Shane, you could organize a comprehensive database of all those sources.
Oh, thanks.
Martha and I are talking about how to do that, right, how we're going to do this with that, that job there, I mean, and like I say, I've got every job from A to Z, and by the way, I don't have a job for Z in Shenango County, but I'm, I saw that, uh, Colgate University was looking for somebody to run the Zamboni, so I thought that was close enough for us. Right, you can take those jobs from A to Z, and I can find two or three openings for every one of them.
Yeah.
Also, nobody knows how to use ONET, I don't know if you guys are familiar with ONET, it's an online, uh, database from the Department of Labor. If you, let's say you look at chemists, right, you click on chemist, it will tell you what chemist makes, what a chemist does, what the educational requirements are, and all the related jobs, all the jobs that are related to it. Martha did not know that ONET existed. So what I've done is I've done a database of open entry level jobs, because that's what she asked me to do in the county. I've got a data set of open entry level jobs, and I've got all the ONET data attached to it, so a kid could look at an opening, you know, an, an open job, job in the county, and click on the ONET data, and they're going to know what that job pays on median wages, what the educational requirements are, what the job duties would be.
And very. Any other counties are doing a better job with this than Shenango County's doing?
Everybody's struggling, I'm, 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 I'm in meetings with the, with our region on this, you know, Bob Murphy and other people down in the Benham area, I'm, I'm in a meeting every single week, and no, they're not good at it. I believe that, um, Carol Miller at AM&amp;T, who I worked closely with for years, I think she may have a grant coming to do some work around this. But we're just, we, everybody struggles with it.
Yeah.
Right?
It's a shame.
And, you know, and the other piece that we struggled with, right, I mean, SUNY Broom, I helped them put together a DACOM committee, because they're going to do a two-year mechatronics program that will go into them for, for your program at Delhi. And I helped put together the DACOM committee, um, Steve Swanberry, retired from Corning, actually Mike, Eric Miles was on that, and one of his associates, because they want to work around green energy. And, uh, you know, I helped put the DACOM committee together, we're working on it, on a program there, but it's going to be on campus, where the Morrisville program, we can move it around, and that's another problem we have in these rural areas. How do you, how do you, how do I train somebody? Bob, I mean, you know the skill sets I'm talking about, right? How, how do I train somebody who is working at Shabani, lives in Herkimer, right, or working at Shabani, and lives in Masonville or someplace, right, they're driving half an hour, forty-five minutes to get to the facility. Now, if I'm going to run a program at the Norwich campus, they're driving a half hour further over to Norwich to the program, and then they've got an hour and a half drive home.
Right.
Right, so that's part of what we're talking about MACNE with, is how do we take, you know, how do we, how do we, it's the skill set development, without having people have to drive so far, it's the, and then all these jobs, I don't know.
Just, um, not to interject on what Steve was talking about, was a lot of the entry level, just so you know, to Empire Development, this was part of the Revit Plan that we put together with, um, the Redic Board this festival. So I sit on the manufacturing work group, and this, this is, you know, Steve's right, this is a problem across the whole region, but one of those, um, priorities and things that we're talking about doing is as the center tier, bringing all these manufacturers together to talk about, not just the entry level jobs, but those higher up jobs, higher paying jobs, the engineers, you know, trying to get people to relocate to the southern tier, because we need to market ourselves as a place to go, and here's, you know, depending on what your interests are and what's around, so it is something that we're working on. At least, as, you know, as far as EST goes, and, and trying to pull these manufacturers together in a way that makes sense to, really, it's about marketing our region, it's about, you know, here's what Shenango County has, and you know, here's, here's the southern tier, but then let's hone in on the county, so, um, it is, it is being addressed on, on multiple levels.
I know they're not called this anymore, but Southern Tier East, whatever they're called now, are they a player in this?
Southern Tier Eight, um, not specifically for placing people with jobs, I mean, we are.
I mean, organizing something that would, or helping fund something that would.
Um, not, not specifically, no, um, obviously with our ARC grants, we do fund programs that do this, like the DCMO, BOCs has applied previously for, um, workforce development, so as people in Notsego County, you know, there's funding for those, but not specifically for designing programs like that.
Okay. Should we move on to privilege of the floor?
Go for it.
I don't have, you want to just call out the name Shane, and then?
Sure, Paul Roman, anything? Ted? Carrie?
Uh, just want to let you know, since I've been updating you about some of the IDA work, um, the Puckett Solar Project in Green finally closed, um, on the twenty-ninth of January, that project, no, it did, well, mostly at least, our end, our side, IDA side has completed, we've been in contact with Harris and Penny Haddad from Green, um, to move that project forward, so you should see more momentum on that. Um, we still have not received an application from, um, the Coventry Project that I told you about, um, and received a seeker for another project in Green, but they haven't come to the IDA for any kind of assistance. The Tiffany Solar, Tiffany Energy Project is tentatively scheduled to close at the end of March. Thanks.
Mike Flanagan?
Um, no new business.
Paul Thompson?
I have, I think.
George Sennick? You're muted. You're still muted. There you go.
Took a while, um, I really don't have anything more at this time, we still do not have another, um, supervisor who has stepped up to the plate to serve on the planning board, and will continue to work on that. Other than that, once again, the county is looking for replacements for their IT department. I, I think, you know, as other employers route, they're looking for people, the county has a, a large number of positions that are open.
Back to you, Bob.
Yep, no, I have nothing, I think, we're ready to adjourn and move on to the two thirty-nine review.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, the first one we have is the Ridge Subdivision in Guilford.
Got to find it. This one, oh, that's that one. I don't know if I have that on here.
Okay, I can just pass it over to Bob, and he can hopefully explain it.
Yeah, this is, this one's really straightforward, it's, um, simple subdivision, the parcel now is just a bit over nine acres. This gentleman named Jerry Reyes, uh, is asking to break up about three and a third acres from that parcel that he's going to sell to an adjoining neighbor, so we had no, no concerns about it at our planning board.
Everybody have any questions, Bob? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the subdivision of the town of Guilford. Second?
Second, Ted.
All in favor?
Hi.
The next one's in a town of Oxford, is the Gray Subdivision. This is, um, a big, uh, big plot, and it's getting split off to family members. And Paul can add anything to that?
I will, I will tell you, with a hurry of a public job, Mr. Gray, it's kind of, so the writers for his kids, um, we only got the final survey, there is, as it was, and we handed it up here. As you can see, we did right aways for the little fleet piece, uh, fifty foot right away. Originally, they wanted to use that driveway for the access, and we tried to find one in thirty years, forty years, if the kids move on, who pass on, who's responsible for that driveway? And he was going to donate the driveway to the town, the town does not want it, and I told him, if he's going to donate to town, he's going to bring it to the town, where they designed things, and he couldn't afford it, so he finally gave, they gave it to, to the flag box, um, and planning board has approved it. I know Bob, I was supposed to get ahold of you, because this is on the town line, but I don't know if Guilford has a problem of what we did here. But basically, uh, we go into a public hearing next week. Uh, have anybody got any questions on it?
The chances are they use that driveway for themselves, and.
They're going to use that driveway.
Right ways are for protection for the future.
For the future, they all, all have access to.
Right, so nothing, nothing is landlocked, or dependent on that circle. And then, the circle itself is owned by the lot that's on, uh, on the right hand side.
Then the circle itself is owned by the lot that's on the, on the right inside, correct? The inside of the circle.
The, the, the main house right now is in the back, keeps big pigs.
Okay.
Uh, you, they're going to put nicer poles up along the driveway up to the main house.
Okay.
Can you guys see the map on the screen just to confirm the survey? Okay, good.
If I have any questions or comments? That I'll make a motion or offer, ask for a motion to approve, I'm sorry.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second, I'll Davis.
Favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, one exception. Next one is in town of Green, is PGC Products Fulfillment Center Site Plan. Uh, it's a southern company that's going to truck kitty litter up here bulk and add package in it. Uh, it's a, a mail order company, uh web based or whatever. And uh, so then it'll ship it uh not to grocery stores or whatever, to individual houses, where it reads, I guess, uh, you know, through the internet. Um, I'm not really sure where this is in the town of Green.
It's down below the, you know, the old Curtis, not Curtis lumber building, the old Millwork Building behind the USA Gas Station.
Yeah, yeah, I figured it was down in that little
It's in that back, back road.
Back road. It goes behind Route twelve.
Yeah. Used to be, what was it called? That lumber place?
Yeah, yeah.
Jenbrook, no, Jenbrook.
I watched it down, down, it's behind.
Yeah, Jenbrook.
And all that stuff.
Yep.
The company actually looked at that site at one time, I think, to manufacture this kitty litter. They were going to make it out of of fly ash.
Yeah, that was about six or eight years ago, I think.
Yeah, yeah. I got involved in that. We looked at the railroad, using the railroad to get the fly ash here and.
So said it was going to create three, four jobs, uh, just chuck in UPS it out and that's pretty good as far as traffic. That's all I have on it. We have a motion or a discussion? Now I have a motion to approve. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Next is town of Green, Green Community Solar Site Plan. Is this the one you were just talking about, Carrie?
She had to be right back.
Okay, all right. Is this?
I don't know if she's back for a be right back yet.
All right, okay. Do you know?
I
Is this a brand new one or?
Um. This is on Route twelve in Green.
It's way down south, right by the Dollar General.
Um, I'm not sure. It says two eighty-three New York State Route twelve. So it's not next to
Another side road off.
It's not next to Coventry, I don't think so. Because if it was on Route twelve, that'd be
Twelve, no, but I think it's down by where the Dollar General was.
No, that was Pocket. That's the one that's up on.
That's the one that Carrie's talking about.
Yeah, that was one we, we previously did.
All right, so this is, I don't know where it is though.
Yeah, I'm just gonna find it.
But it's off that, there's another road that it's at. The twelve is in back of the
Right, fine. Oak Grove Drive.
Yeah, I don't know where that is.
It's down by the cemetery on Route twelve, almost that, by that Dollar General.
Where we, where the sign is, I told you there was Eagle Project at one time, by the, before
Yeah, before the park. The
Before drive, uh, place of place.
Um, no, I think it's down farther.
Further down, oh, different cemetery.
There's one where they could be, there's like a little U-shaped road. I think it's down by there.
Okay, that's what it shows, right?
So by the English, English Road.
English Road, yeah.
Yeah, down by there.
Okay. So, so south of the village.
Trying to figure out a different map on here, but
Yeah, there's that.
Making you dizzy yet?
Yeah, it's a whole uh log for me, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, see, here's the, there's like a
Like an old Route twelve there.
Old Route twelve, right. And I think it's up in these areas up here.
Okay.
But yeah, it's down by uh, what's the Salisbury, you know, the little campground, almost out by the Dollar General.
Right now.
Yeah, way down, almost down to the Broome County line, I think.
Okay, all right. And I had, I had written down all my acres of water, but it was like thirty maybe, roughly.
This has been through the Green Planning Board?
They, they
They're the ones sending it.
They submitted it, yes.
They sent it, okay.
Yeah, thirty point two nine acres, I believe it says.
What's it say about public hearing?
Man, you're testing my skills tonight.
What is it on there, like public hearing schedule for? So they have a public hearing scheduled for February twenty-second.
There, no. Yeah, right there, seven PM.
Yeah. So they haven't approved it yet.
Oh, here you go. Notice has been given to the town of Barker, town of Fenton. So it's down near that.
South, after, okay.
Thirty acres of panels or a thirty acre property?
Thirty acre property, I believe it said.
How many megawatt facility is it?
Man, stop asking questions.
You, you can get back to me on that one.
Yeah.
I'm just interested.
Right.
Twenty-two acres of solar panels. And I do not see where it says the megawattage.
Okay.
Five point zero ground mounted. Here you go, right here.
Yeah.
So five megawatt. Yeah, it's right here on the screen.
Oh, okay, all the way up there? Okay. Oh, I don't have it.
Right on the seeker.
All right, you got it.
And this is the same company that is doing one in the town of German.
Okay.
So it's not like this is a one project thing, there's, there's multiple, you know. He's called us a few times.
Okay. Any discussion or questions?
So we could approve it contingent on nothing coming up?
You also submitted the DOT.
We're waiting for it, yeah, right.
No, okay, approval, uh, contingent on any DOT comments?
Well, the results of the public hearing too, right?
Yeah, we, yeah, I mean, that's not anything we can do, though.
Yeah, because we have to only look at
We can only look at countywide issues.
Okay.
So the motion is for approval, contingent upon any DOT requirements.
Second.
All favor?
Hi.
Hi. Shane, can I ask a question?
Sure.
How mu- how many solar, installed solar projects do we have in Shenango County now, you know?
Oh, boy, um.
Three in Norwich.
Yeah, there's Yeah, three in Norwich, there's one in Smithville, there's proposed two in Green, proposed one in Coventry, proposed one in German. There's um several that are on people's actual property for residential reasons. Um, actually, if you go to the Southern Tier Eight website, we did an energy study across the entire region. And some of the maps in there show proposed and current energy projects, both solar, wind, geothermal, everything.
Okay.
I think if you Google um Southern Tier Eight Energy Study, it should probably pop up.
Okay.
Wasn't it one of the
Proposed, and it never happened.
Never happened, right.
But like the wind farm is, it's like a proposed one on the maps.
Right, yeah. I mean, I get required all the time, but
Right. And that Southern Tier Eight study was done last year, so it's not early this year, I guess. Um, where am I on? Last year, last January. So it doesn't have the ones that are relatively new, but it has a lot of the existing ones.
Okay, moving on to the town of Samarna, Bay subdivision, we did multiple subdivisions off his property. Uh, this one is a big chunk, basically getting sold to his neighbor.
And there is road access over here on Coy Hill Road.
Right. And it's just going to join his neighbor property, so Any questions or discussion?
Uh, um consolidation, what'd you say it was?
It's a subdivision.
Being sold to his neighbor.
Yep.
So it's just gonna, I mean, it would just be flipped over to hopefully one big tax map parcel at the end.
Basically a lot line adjustment in some ways.
Yeah, a big one. We have a motion for approval?
I'll make the motion. Davis.
All favor?
All right.
All right.
All right.
Okay, lastly is in the village of Ambridge. Uh, there's a apartment building now that's going to be changed into a rooming house. Um, this is um down, it's off from um two oh six, two oh six is in the, for
Yeah, so here's two
That's two oh six.
Two oh six is right here.
That, the building and uh, just below that is uh, uh, they build garbage trucks and then
Auto zone.
There's an auto parts store, that's down from that.
Still seeing the map.
Right. My question is
Oh, sorry, hang on. Hang on. There you go.
I don't know, I guess it's a distance to two oh six.
Right. Um, parking, did they say anything about parking?
Well, so we just have to look at county issues. They're not really, that's their issue. Because I can't see any places, any place not to talk. Other than the driveway at the front. There is no driveway to the back.
And they don't say anything about parking in the application here, so. It's renting one room. So it'll probably be like an additional one car.
One more apartment.
Yeah, basically adding an apartment, yeah.
So we could just make it a, a concern
Right.
That there may not be enough parking for off, off street parking for the development. Then also continued to find also continued to find DOT.
And I don't know how much room is back here, but this looks like a garage, so, or barn or something. This driveway right here. There's a driveway right here by this white car. Yeah.
What's the address again?
Uh, what is it? Ten Front Street. Yeah.
I mean, we, we're still negative deck condition and we're concerned. Yeah.
Now Ted, yeah, here you go, picture. So you can kind of see the driveway here. Good old Zillow.
Let's check the size of the additional room they're creating here. Just kidding.
I don't think it says.
I, I, we're, we're just concerned about access, right? I mean
Right.
Yeah, we don't, yeah, it's part of, you know, county issues, that's why it's
So I mean, you know, we can't, can we, we can't really dictate volume. We can only dictate that it's, you know, meets the
Right.
As long as they have the adequate parking, which it looks like they have this driveway, and it looks like on the map, there was a whole other area that you go to too.
Ten beds.
You got a whole lot of room here, too.
So Ambridge has zoning, it's, it's actually, that's through the ZDA down there.
Right.
Um, so it's just a request for um a change, a various, whatever.
Right, it's a non-conforming use, it's a residential.
So we want to take the parking off? Off the concern or just leave it on there for the
Couldn't hurt to leave it on, just
Okay, so the motion would be to approve with a concern about parking and continue to find DOT. Second?
Second.
All favor?
All right.
So, yeah.
That's it.
Hey, as a secretary, was I supposed to be taking notes during this?
Uh, yeah.
Can we do it? Can we start over again?
No.
Don't worry, we can send you the recording.
Right, you can watch the recording.
That's all we got. Did you want to adjourn, Bob?
Yeah.
Oh. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We're done.
Okay, nine fifteen-one.
Shane, could you do a favor?